Okay, I'm gonna call and order the May 8, 2019 meeting of the Board of Education. Mr. Moran, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? All I got called will see him.
Here. Mrs. Crabtree.
Here.
Mrs. Erickson.
Here.
Mr. Hanlon.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Matheson.
Here.
Mr. Paulson. Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a pretty decent sized agenda tonight. Does anybody have any modifications to the agenda?
Yeah, there's just one. We did add a second closed session topic for tonight, so under the agenda you will notice we have a closed session topic for purchase or lease of low property. We've also added one on a one-on-one conversation of staff.
Okay. Any public comments? All right, superintendent's report.
Yeah, thank you. So, a couple of things that I wanted to share with the Board tonight. Number one, a welcome. So, in a little bit when we get to the personnel report, one of the items that the Board is aware of that's on the personnel report is the appointment of a new individual who will assume the role of Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services. So, Melissa Murphy is with us here this evening, and as we get to that agenda, I'll kind of reintroduce her, but I just wanted to welcome Melissa and make sure the Board knew who Melissa was, certainly. Wanted to share with the Board that this morning you have a copy at your place of a lime green colored folder, so the College of DuPage did a breakfast this morning for community partners. And so I just thought there were some interesting materials in here from the College of DuPage. I think a nice annual report that they do that might be useful for us as a resource as we're thinking about how we perhaps could push some type of state of the district piece out. But it was a nice breakfast, great turnout, had a chance to connect with a lot of our community partners that obviously also happen to be community partners with College of DuPage. And one of the things that I thought was interesting and promising is that their interim president specifically mentioned in their State of the College addressed their interest in really continuing to work much more assertively with high schools around dual credit and opportunities for dual credit. And we'd not heard that from the college in a while. We have been kind of pressing on the other end, so it was promising to hear the college say that that's a priority for them, because that always says case. Wanted to let the Board know that we got notice over, actually I think just in the last couple of days, that in a couple of weeks we do anticipate the initial release of the Five Essentials data. And so I anticipate that as long as that data release goes as planned, that hopefully we'll be able to put that on our June agenda to give you an overview of the Five Essentials data and especially the elements from that data that are a part of our dashboard or identified for our dashboard. Faith shared with me a little bit earlier today that we also got the early release on our access data, so our access data monitors the progress of our English learners. And we're to be happy to know that we took another marked increase up in terms of our exit rate for students out of the English learner program. And so that speaks to the quality of support and service that they're getting. And again, we'll share that detail with you coming up, but just thought I'd share that that was extremely positive. And then, just kind of a final reminder that we're entering into the end of the school year season. We don't have another board meeting before our high school graduations over Memorial Day weekend, and so this is an exciting time of year, I think, when the PTA Council did their recognition breakfast. I always think that as much as we talk about our dashboard, we talk about the work that we monitor that's extremely important, we see the true impact and value of our work when we see the stories of our students and what they've accomplished, where they're going, what their goals and ambitions are. And so there are lots of opportunities coming up here at the end of the year to celebrate and recognize students. I know Board's gotten invitations, I believe, to the two honors events for the two high schools, of course graduation, and just know that there are ample activities going on here at the end of the year that if you, it's a great time to maybe connect with your adopted schools and see if there's an opportunity to go out for a visit as some of the end of the year activities are going on, because truly exciting. And then, finally, I just wanted to mention to the Board that I've also asked Charlie to look ahead to probably our June agenda to give the Board a short presentation on ALICE. So, ALICE is a new safety protocol that we're moving to an active response. Safety protocol, the city of Wheaton is actually doing a community forum on ALICE because they've been a partner with us in moving that direction, I believe, the Friday in front of Memorial Day is when they're gonna do a section. But in June, I want to make sure that we give the Board a little bit of background on where we're headed around ALICE as a new safety protocol, just kind of help you understand. And I say new, it's really just an evolution of the practices that are in place, so it doesn't mean we're throwing out everything that's worked, but it's kind of a next evolution of how it is that we're working to keep kids and adults safe in their schools. So, I think that's all I've got for tonight.
Okay, any questions?
I have one. For our own Board members, what is Five Essentials?
Five Essentials is the annual state instructional climate survey. So, and I say annual now because it used to be every other year, it will now be every year that Five Essentials will be administered. And it is, it's a survey tool that takes feedback from teachers, from parents, and from students at a building, and kind of aggregates it into a set of reports or feedback that give you information on how a school is set up to be able to continue to make instructional improvements of the climate and the support that surrounds it.
Okay, next is the consent agenda. We have a short one tonight with only 14 and 10 items. I'll read them in order. Number one, acceptance of gift to Emerson Elementary School. Number two, approval to post AP US Government and Politics textbook. Number three, approval to post Information Technology I and II textbooks. Number four, approval of English I textbooks. Number five, appointment of the district representative to the DuPage area occupation education system, which is D A O E S, or I believe also known as T C D. Board of Directors for the 2019-20 school year. Number six, approval of the ROE permit applications for scheduled work at Sandberg Elementary and Franklin Middle School through the approved guaranteed energy services contract. Number seven, approval of IHSA annual renewal. Number eight, approval of a resolution appointing treasurer and approving the treasurer's bond. Number nine, approval of the treasurer's bond coverage. Number 10, approval of SNAP vending contract renewal. Number 11, approval of a resolution to amend and restate the Community Unit School District 200 Section 125 medical flexible spending account on a dependent care flexible spending account and pre-tax premium plan under the Section 125 plan. Number 12, approval of bills payable and payroll. Number 13, approval of minutes, April 30, 2019, special board reorganization meeting, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to December 2017 as allowable by law. And 14, approval of the personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and legal absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items Board members will want removed from the consent agenda tonight? Okay, Dr. Schuler, any?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. The answer, I already introduced Melissa and I think has cheered with the Board. So, the search process for a new Assistant Superintendent drew really a quality pool of applicants. We had 95 people apply for that position and really some good quality candidates. I could not have been more pleased with the engagement and the support that we got from our teams internally and helping us to work through that process. Certainly, Melissa was put for her paces, and the number of times that she came out to the district to spend some time with us, and she certainly emerged from that process, I think, as a quality person. We are absolutely sorry to see Faith leave the position because she's done some amazing work in our teaching and learning department, but I am fully confident that Melissa's ready to pick that work up where we are and continue to improve this form. So, huge welcome to Melissa. Also want to point out on the personnel report that tonight you are approving pay rates or salaries for administrative and non-union support staff. So, you're approving the specific salaries. Those represent a 2% pay increase that is going to those two classifications of employees, and certainly is well deserved. I've said many times and will continue to say that the strength of this district is the quality of our people and the work that they do to improve and make conditions for learning possible for our kids. And so no amount of money is gonna fully thank and appreciate our staff for the work that they're doing, but I think certainly this recommendation very much deserved for our leaders and our non-union support staff. So, just wanted to share those two comments at the onset.
So, we're not approving the contracts tonight that comes in June, is that correct?
Yeah, you only need to approve the pay rates. We will execute the contracts based on that, but the actual contract is not just the pay rate.
And, excuse me, this afternoon, Dr. Schuler, at my request, sent out a copy of those two versions of the contracts, just because I wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to read all the details again. Similar contracts we've had in the past, so it's gonna be very transparent that we all had the opportunity to see this in advance. Any other questions or comments about?
I have a question. Just to be clear on the administrative salary contract, could you explain briefly how the Board has reached the conclusion to get this on the consent agenda? What did we do before tonight?
Sure, will. So, we, the Board has met in closed session the last three or four meetings to review elements of the plan. We reviewed comparisons to our benchmark districts and a variety of different positions, had some good discussion, made some adjustments, I believe, and those that research has kind of embedded in what we have tonight.
This is the conclusion of those we, and the same is true with the benefits associated with that, is that correct?
Correct. So, we have made some small tweaks based on the discussions.
And remind me, what was last year's increase for the administration?
Last year, we were 1.5, 1.5%.
The year before that was?
Zero.
Zero. Just keep my memory fresh. Thank you.
Hey, any other questions on consent agenda items?
I do have a question. On the ROE and the permitting process, I just wanted to get an understanding of how that works. I know it's separate from maybe city permitting. One of the questions, is there a cost with that, or is it just approval? And does everything have to go through ROE, or is it just certain projects?
Do you wanna walk through that?
The ROE process does not cost anything. Any projects the district enters into construction projects that has a value of over $50,000, we are required to get a construction permit from the ROE. They are actually issuing the permit for the district to do the work. We do work with our local municipalities on certain aspects of permitting that they have to do as a group, involves stormwater and those type of things. And we also work with them on, I think, what is it, daylight, lighting and noise ordinances and some other things.
Nice.
So, we, but the ROE is the permitting agency for construction projects for the school district. There is no need to issue that permit with the ROE.
And so is that just an administrative step? I mean, is it an automatic approval, and what's the purpose of it?
Just to file and let, with the ROE, I noticed that we're doing construction projects. We will, the attachment that's been stamped by our architect and has some of the information as far as the project will go over to the ROE, and they will, they will in turn issue an actual permit like we had at the construction project site. So, similarly, when you go to the county or somewhere to get a permit, they issue an actual permit document.
Okay, thank you.
At the end of the project, they'll issue certificate of occupancy as well.
They don't do an extensive review, though. I mean, they don't have a staff of architects and/or construction people, is that correct? Or it's kind of somewhat formality, is that?
I would say that, no, they review it.
Okay.
And then when it's done, they'll, we'll do a walkthrough in certain cases, and they'll look for codes violations, make sure it's up to code.
But I mean, we're relying on our staff to really do all the part of it.
And they're relying on our architect's thing, and that's why it's gotta be a stand by architect.
But like code things that you might have on a whole project, when you get a permit, part of it is obviously the ability to get money, but part of it is to make sure you're adhering to code. So, does ROE, ROE do that, or do you still do that, like with Wheaton or Winfield where it's schools?
As far as building codes go, that's incumbent on the architect that's stamping the documents to say that it's being built within the codes of the, you know, state rules as far as school districts are concerned. So, they are relying on the architect. The architect has to sign off and put their stamp on it that it's meeting all those codes. Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Moved by Mr. Hanlon.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Hutchinson, you have a roll call vote.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Booten?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes, the consent agenda passes. We also have a consent agenda number two for approval of resolution designating depositories.
No, just one question.
Any questions or comments on this one in particular? Jimmy?
Oh, sure. I won't vote on this because I'm on the Board of Directors for the one of the banks that is a depository, Wheaton Bank and Trust, or Wintrust, but in my thoughts.
So, this is where we put our investment, right?
It's one of the depositories, actually, investment and/or checking, or payroll.
Any other questions? Okay, can I have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda two as presented?
移到
By Mrs. Crabtree.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Booten. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Booten?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
I'm saying?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. Okay, consent agenda number two passes. So, now we go to our three, three action items. First one, if you recall, I think at the last committee of the whole, we had a presentation by PMA about our fourth and final phase of our bond refinancing. So, the next item for consideration is adoption of a resolution providing for the issue of district's general obligation refunding bonds, and that the Board of Education would consider the adoption of a resolution providing for the issue of said bonds and levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest thereof. The resolution sets forth the parameters of the issuance of said bonds and sale thereof by designated officials of the district, the pertinent terms of said parameters, including the specific parameters governing the manner of sale, length of maturity, rates of interest, purchase price, and tax levy of said bonds. Do you have some information by, presented by Representative PMA Securities?
Yeah, so Jen Currier's here tonight from PMA, so Bob Lewis is the individual that the Board has worked with regularly through the process, but Jen's here tonight to give the Board an overview of the last phase of this sale.
Okay, thank you. Sit down. You good? Okay, great. So, the resolution in front of you tonight, as President Paulson mentioned, is just setting forth parameters for the authorized delegates to approve the eventual sale of the refunding bond, which is currently scheduled about a month from now on June 10. So, the major parameters can be found in Section 3 of the document, which begins on page 3, as well as Sections 8 and 9, which begin on page 18. So, I'll summarize some of the major parameters in here. The first is a not to exceed par amount on the refunding bonds of $45 million, and that's what's needed in order to refund the Series 2019 bonds. The actual par amount of the bonds will likely be substantially lower just due to the way that municipal bonds have been pricing, but in any case, it won't be more than $45 million. The final payment can be extended to no later than 2026. There is a max coupon identified of 5%. Now, we expect the true interest cost on the bonds to be much lower than that, closer to 2.5%, perhaps even lower. However, for several years now, municipal bonds have priced at substantial premiums, which means that even though the investor may be getting semi-annual interest payments at a rate of 5%, they will pay you, the issuer, a substantial premium upfront in order to do so. So, that brings down the net interest cost that you're actually paying on your bonds thanks to that premium. So, for instance, on a $100 bond, an investor may pay you $110 upfront in order to get those higher coupons. There's also a minimum present value target of at least 3%. You may recall that our latest estimate from several weeks ago was upwards of 8%, so we expect that to be much lower than what the actual refunding savings will be, but that 3% is an industry standard.
I have a question. You talked about a bond being sold for more than par.
Correct.
Okay, if that happens, let's say you sell it for, instead of a $100 bond, it'll be $105. Where does the extra $5 go?
So, that is used to reduce the par amount, the actual amount of bonds you issue. So, any premium you generate upfront will bring down the par amount. So, rather than being at that $45 million maximum level that you're authorizing in this resolution, any premium you get will bring that down.
So, in no case will our rate, because of either the amount or whatever, be more than that rough estimated 2.5%? Is that a fair statement, even though the bond's?
That's our estimate of where it will end up. It might be a little bit more than that, but you won't be paying any investor semi-annual interest at a rate greater than 5%.
Well, the coupon says 5%, so we're paying 5%. I mean, but it, we're funding the proceed, the proceed basically goes into an escrow.
Right, so, exactly. So, that'll be used to then pay off those old costs. But the investor will give you, in return for that higher coupon flow, they'll give you more dollars upfront, which means the size of your borrowing will be lower now.
Okay, but in reality, then our payment schedule will not change because the rate is higher than, you know, it's higher than 2.5% or whatever, because that premium will be set aside or escrowed to be used to pay off the bonds as they mature at that higher rate, and the interest for that amount.
Correct.
So, in no way are we therefore paying more than that 2.5%.
Right, exactly.
And all the proceeds, basically, we're getting no new money out of this, correct?
No, it's all.
So, it's all basically escrowed to retire the old debt, or either currently or in the future?
Yes, and it is a current refunding. It will all be refunded by actual refunds.
Okay.
Okay, the first thing we need to do is have Mr. Hanlon as Secretary read up the resolution by cut.
Resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $45 million general obligation refunding school bonds, Series 2019, of Community Unit School District Number 200, Page County, Illinois, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of said school district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
Okay, can I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution as presented and read? Moved by Mr. Matheson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Long. Any other information or comments, or I guess do questions, any other questions from Board members?
Yeah, just one more thing, I guess I wanted to mention, Mr. Farley, if you can help with this. Based on kind of the conservative projections in terms of interest rate, what do you anticipate to be the real savings to the district as a result of refunding?
I think the media is $3 million, and then the net present savings was even higher, it was?
Yeah, about $3 million.
Again, that's just bottom line, just to be crystal clear on that, it means based on debt service that the community would expect to play, to pay, given the way that those bonds are currently structured, the community will in fact pay $3 million less than they would otherwise be paying, so it is a straight savings to the taxpayer.
That happens because the interest rate on the old bonds was almost 5% versus what you do, you know, 3% now.
And so this is, as I mentioned earlier, this is the fourth and final step in refinancing our bonds, I think, enough the amount mentioned, the last meeting was about $7 million in total savings, which means savings that we didn't have to ask the taxpayers for in future debt service tax levies, you don't have $7 million extra just hanging around.
And one other comment, that this also levelizes the debt service. It stays at roughly a little over $20 million for the term, it drops as we approach the end, where had we not refinanced in the, I don't know what year, about the fourth year out, we would have had an increase in the, almost to $31 million. So, and that, again, is not part of the tax cap or anything along, you know, would have been a true increase in the, you know, the amount of tax being raised or assessed against the community. So, you know, this is a real win-win, I suppose.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Mrs. Hutchinson, would you call the roll for the vote upon the motion and adoption of the said resolution?
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Booten?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Math, I'm sorry, Mr. Paulson?
Yes. Okay, the motion carried and the said resolution has been adopted, approved, and we actually have to sign something during the meeting here?
Yeah.
In the same open meeting, and Director, as Director's Secretary also to record the segment of records.
This completes a six-year project that we started six years ago, that started refinancing with that.
What's the financial company that you're gonna do that?
I don't know. It's a trip. Don't go away in Florida.
Okay, we have two more action items. Number two is the approval to post the high school, middle school, and elementary school handbooks for the 2019-2020 school year. Looks like we're already getting some information.
Let me just, before Dr. Kyle starts, I want to point out to the Board, you don't have paper copies of these, so as you know, if you look through the handbooks in advance, it's, they're very long documents, and so we decided to save a couple of trees and not printing those for you, but they were, they were attached to the Board items. So, I think it can be kind of two elements to the overview tonight. First, Dr. Kyle talking a little bit about the content changes to the handbook, so that's the document in your Board packet that's called 2019-20 Handbook Changes. And then, Miss Black, I'll just talk a little bit about some of the structural formatting changes aligned to make them more consumable and readable, I think both interested the Board had expressed a year ago. So, Dr. Kyle?
All right, just wanted to kind of give the Board a little bit of background of what we did to kind of get to this point. We started in February. I spoke with both Assistant Principals of both high schools to start to kind of see what was needed for what changes in the handbook. Then I moved on to the middle school principals at a meeting as well, elementary principals as well to give feedback. Once I got feedback from the principals and the administrators that use this handbook and the discipline policy, I also had an opportunity to show it to the senior leadership team. After that, one thing we tried a little bit different this year is to utilize the Citizens' Advisory Committee to show the changes, the same document that you got, is to show the Citizens' Advisory
Citizens' Advisory Committee that the changes that would be added to the handbook or subtracted for the handbook for next year. The overall discussion was positive. We got some good feedback from parents. It is a part of the process. When you look at discipline policy, you do want parents to review, so it kind of meant two ideas. In the past, we had a small committee with a couple of parents. I really thought the Citizens' Advisory Committee was a good change through the process. So after Citizens' Advisory Committee had made some corrections from there, and then Erica actually presented last week at the Community Engagement Committee with Rob Hanlon and Chris Crabtree that were a part of it. So we kind of gone through a process, got feedback, got input. Really, the changes, if you had a chance to look at this document, not going to read all of it to everybody, but it's new policy. We're matching policy at all three levels. We have three different handbooks, so we might have found, oh, it's in elementary, middle, but not high. Let's add it in high school as well. And then updated current policies and protocols. Just to give one little example, is that there's a protocol in the handbook that said, if you don't want to be photographed, send a letter to your principal by September 5th. We don't do that anymore. There's an actual electronic process of the photography piece. So just matching policies and what we actually do with what we have in the handbook. So it was kind of a lanky process, but I learned a lot, and I wanted to share that with you. The other piece that Dr. Schuler talked about is Erica really was instrumental in making it more readable, the readability. As we looked at all three, they were different, elementary, middle, and high school. So our goal was to make it easier to read. And one piece I wanted to share with the board that I got pretty clear feedback on, and parents tell me this all the time in the role I'm in right now, we don't read the handbook, right? They say we never read it. And I think that was brought up, I think, last year at a board meeting. So we are going to institute, as every year a parent registers their kid, they're going to be directed to basically a button that says, I know where to find the handbooks. Doesn't say they read it, but we do want them every year to be able to know where they need to go, because at the end of the day, we want to make sure that they know where it is, and we're switching that as well. So those are some changes we've made. Really just tried to clean it up and make some changes. And, you know, Erica, would you like to speak about the readability piece?
Sure. Thanks. So in each of, our middle schools and our high schools each do their own handbook. And so this is just an example of what sounds looks like this year. In their planner is where their handbook information is located. So in the back portion of the handbook is calendar. A lot of the schools, depending on their needs, insert information, bell schedules, building maps, different things like that. But then the big chunk of what's in their planner is the district handbook information. And so the handbook information in all four of the middle schools is consistent. The handbook information in the two high school handbooks is consistent. And so I just wanted to point out to where that information is located. And so what we really spent some time doing is, I think, while the feedback we heard from the board too, was that the information just didn't seem like it was organized and it didn't have a very good flow to where you could locate information. And so we really took a step back and tried to reorganize information. And I think, you know, over the years as this handbook has progressed, there's been a lot of additions, a lot of subtractions, and unless there was a lot of intention about the placement of that information, I think it just kind of grew and the disorganization happened. So we spent some time reorganizing and making sure that content was exactly the same in all three levels. So if there was a reference on, I don't know, foods in school or discipline policies and procedures there, we made sure that they're the same in all three levels and other big chunks like that. So that's what we've spent a lot of time doing, but then also, we didn't attach this to the board report, but we are slightly adding some design elements to the interior of, to the content as well. So before, depending on which level, this is how the information is laid out. In middle school, it's in narrow two columns, and it's just, that is not very easy to follow and find information. And so we shared with the Community Engagement Committee as well, this will be the new front cover. It has the district logo, some of the information that Dr. Kyle mentioned about that they need to annually acknowledge, that they know where to locate the handbook, the addresses and logos of the schools. And then the interior pages will look a little bit different too, with clearly called-out headers that matches the table of contents, et cetera. So does that make sense?
So that's kind of our presentation of where we are to this point and what changes we made to the handbooks that hopefully will be posted.
We know that Chris has to be the first to come and stop you.
I do. First, I want to say thank you, because I really... Oh, you want to go first? I want to say thank you, because it's been something that I've talked about for the last couple of years about that sign-off page, and I really appreciate the way that we're doing it now. I think that that's what most parents do, is they just want to reference it when they need it, and so I'm happy about that. So I do have printed copies, and I will leave, maybe Erica can give them to you, because I did make some notes of a few, you know, typo kind of, those kinds of things as well. But there are a couple, just kind of big ideas, and I appreciate that kind of laying them side by side. I did find a couple of things. I'm going to use bus stop and bus procedures as an example. We do not reference that in our high school handbooks, and so I was curious about that. I want to be sure that our technology language is reflective of what we're using in the district. So many of our classrooms have Google Classrooms, social media pages, many classrooms have social media pages. Do we have policies out there for staff-student communication? Should that be referenced at all? Let's see here. There's a lot on website in there, and there's very little on social media. And so I've also looked at like other districts just to kind of see. Our district very much models what others' languages, and so I don't know if things have just not necessarily evolved at the state level kind of looking at that, but I do worry that so much is done via social media, and we're not really referencing that. Lots of it on construction of webpages for classrooms, but not that. So I just want to... You want to speak on that before I continue?
I know part of what we're also doing right now is we're getting to press policy, which talks about technology, and there's an update in that as well. But in the handbook, and Rod, I can point to you, I know in all the handbooks, there is the policy, our technology policy that's included in there, which is a piece, and it's actually a long piece in all three of them. But I just, I jotted that add the social media piece, and I think that's something we can look over if there are pieces that need to just add that.
Yeah, I'm going to use cyberbullying for an example. So in there, if I remember correctly, it even addresses cyberbullying via fax, sending of fax, but not via social media. Like, so I just want us to make sure that as we're going through and doing these overhauls, are we current with what we're using? And I just know that, you know, I was in reading one day at a school, and, you know, the teacher's like, well, I want this for my Twitter feed and our classroom Instagram. He was taking pictures of me, you know, like, he'd ask my permission and stuff like that. But if we're using these regularly, I feel like there, is there a process? And then that whole, also, is there a policy or something for staff-student communication?
One of the new press policies, incorrect if I'm wrong, that will, that the board will be asked to adopt, specifically calls out social media and that. So we can talk about how we incorporate that language without, maybe until you approve those, calling out a specific policy, and then once you approve them, then we can add, reference it in for next years. I mean, 2021 handbook, we can list the specific policy. So there's no, I don't think there's a problem with us pulling out that language at least, but just not referencing a policy that you adopted.
Dress code, it's not the same language in the high school versus the elementary and middle. I, one of them is sticking off the top of my head, is it specifically states at high school, you are not allowed to wear a coat. That, so it's not common language, because it's not in elementary and middle, if you can check that. Elementary also has parking violations in there, which is really the high school parking violations, driving to TCD, and that is, at least it's in my...
My car.
Yeah, it's in there. I wanted to know who the audience was for the middle school handbook, because it's really the parents, because it references multiple times your child, but I didn't feel like that, I noticed that same in the other two. Oh, it references the code of conduct in the high school handbook. So where, how do we enforce that? Is that something then that gets handed out to students, that parents sign off and students sign off on?
Code of Conduct for athletes and people who are students who are in clubs, that's reviewed with them. The athletic directors of both high schools are the ones that enforce that. It is included in the high school because it's a part of what we do at the high school.
Do they sign off on it anywhere? That's where I was curious in terms of...
Do students sign a code of conduct?
I don't know the answer to that. I'm at the top of my head.
Okay.
I can get that answer.
Yeah, I can get that answer, but my guess would be 99% of students who participate in where are Wheaton North or Wheaton South, they will sign off on the code of conduct. Partly that's why we add it to the high school, because it's a big part of what we do.
I just don't want to incorrectly speak out of term, but I believe before each of the sports seasons, there is a meeting with all athletes for that season or that's presented.
And then do we have that same policy though then for code of conduct for band and other activities that are out there? That's what I would, you know, is it for any students that are participating who are just athletes? Would that just be a question that I have? And then there are only one other like main thing, and then I'll give you all my things. In the high school handbook, I don't believe we do this anymore. I might be wrong. Take the test on patriotism and the flag and the pledge.
That's a requirement in your policy. So that is, well, there's going to be a modification to that policy. Actually, it's one of the things that's actually in your list of press policies under grad requirement. It now says passing course. That covers all those things, but those are still required.
That must be where I remember we reviewed it at the Teaching and Reporting Committee that I didn't think that it was there. Okay. I'll give you all my notes, but thank you. It is so much easier to read and to follow and I think find information in here, whereas before it was just randomly, it seemed like it was put in there. I feel like I can find information throughout, so thank you.
Yeah, I'd just echo some of the things Chris said. A ton of work in making it readable and consumable. I thought it was very, much more easier to read than I've seen historically, which is fantastic. And then when we put it on the electronic media, it'll be fantastic, as well, right? I relate to this whole thing. One of the things we talked about in Community Engagement was the distribution of handbooks. And I think the items specifically we talked about was for seniors, at least at North, because that was my direct experience, that because it's distributed access, seniors don't have access, and seniors didn't get it. So we were going to adjust some of that or commit to changing that. Can you comment on that a little bit?
Yeah, I had a chance to talk to both high schools, and the handbook is a big part of kind of what they do at all four levels. They start the school year, they review it at each grade level. Some I know because of that, at least at North and South, they're going to make sure that seniors get it and there's a review and there's a sign-off. So I understood that in the past they did add it. When I talked to Mr. Vegas and then his counterpart, Regina Hinger saw, both assured me that they will go over the handbook and have kids go through it that way. Whether they get it or not, the access, they will have, they will be exposed to the handbook, and they'll be kind of reviewed what's new, what's in there. It's a big part of high school, like each grade level. Seniors aren't as excited as the freshmen about it, but at every grade level, you have those class meetings where you assess it.
My individual point of view as a single board member would be, I think we should ensure seniors get the handbook.
Yeah. My child didn't get any of this, so...
We can make that happen. Thanks, Rod. The document. Thanks.
Any other comments?
I just have one question. Is this, this, we're voting an action item tonight. Can the committee, the Community Engagement Committee go yes, and this is based on its counts? Do you see this as a living document that can be modified in the future?
My one question is, when we post this, because we're posting it for review, right?
No. We're voting on it.
This is for review.
And are we going to review the PDFs that are on, that are on the board site right now? Is that what will be actually posted?
Yes.
Yes. Can we? Real tactical. I get it. Can we go through the high school one and make sure all the fonts are the same? Because you can see everything's all cut and pasted. So that would be really, it's just a picky, yeah. It's just a picky thing, but...
Yeah. Yeah. So again, I guess I want to say what you're going to see, what's going to be posted now is not going to be that final cleaned up. Look, it is the content that will be in the handbook, but it is still laid out in kind of the format where it's been. And again, part of the, just for clarity around that, obviously, you know, the effort to kind of clean it up, make it more consumable, is something that does take a little bit of time. Erica wanted to make sure that the board was comfortable with content first, before we redesigned everything, because if you weren't comfortable with it, we don't want to kind of go through all of the redesign exercise until we knew that we were there. That's why, you know, she just kind of brought a look of what that's going to, that's going to look like. So what will be posted, and I think we can find some way to make sure that it's noted that there's going to be a final formatting to this, but the purpose of the posting, much like your policies, is to make sure the content is out there and we get any feedback or concern on that.
What we can do too is, for your June meeting, we'll have it laid out in the new format and incorporate any changes in the final version for you to approve.
Jim, to answer your question, since you know that this has been an issue with me, yes, I am...
Substantially?
Yes. Yes, to say yes, so...
And you'll have another committee meeting to review these modifications?
I don't think we have one on the agenda.
You'll somehow make forward to the modifications?
Yes.
You would, I ask, you know, again, I want to make sure, after all this procedure, that we get to a document that's acceptable.
Well, at our next June meeting, the board will see these documents finally formatted, minor tweaks dramatically, consistency of...
But again, you know, again, if there's no committee meeting and there's comments like this, then that's really implying one board member that has comments will react to that. You know, I guess that, is that following proper procedure? I'm not the authority to doubt documentation.
From a, from a person on the committee, and with the caveat that we are posting content, not layout, I can support it.
Any other questions? I know the Citizens' Advisory Committee reviewed this, and Susan and I were part of that conversation. I think it's referenced in the CAC meeting notes that are part of our later on agenda. Okay, where are we? We have a motion and a second then.
Involve you.
Can we do motion and a second? Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the posting of the high school, middle school, and elementary school handbooks for the 2019-2020 school year as presented.
I'll move.
Move by Mr. Hanlon, a second by Mrs. Crabtree. Not clear of a vote.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Booton?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. The motion to post the handbooks is approved. In the third and final action item presented is approval of a proposal for the 2019-2020 guest teacher pay. Dr. Schuler, any information?
Yeah, but I hand it over to Dr. Kyle again, and just for immediate clarification, you used the term guest teacher and do a substitute teacher. So when we talk about guest teacher pay, those are our substitute teachers. I think the board is very aware of, kind of where our guest teacher pay rate sat. That's obviously been a concerned point, and I think as we've talked about that over the last couple of years, one of the things that we recognize is that what is a finite amount, or what is a finite resource in this district is money. And so when we allocate additional money to one bucket, we know that, you know, that it's coming from, right, some other opportunity, but I think we felt moving into this year that it was time to address that guest teacher pay. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kyle to share with the board kind of what our recommendation is on how we've approached that issue.
Absolutely. District 200 is no different than any other district right now, especially in the state of Illinois. We are experiencing teacher shortage. So when you're experiencing a teacher shortage, that also hurts us with the guest teachers as well. We have noticed, we looked at our pay compared to other comparative school districts, and we are the lowest. So we wanted to look at, well, how can we try to incentivize our guest teachers who stay here longer and put in the time? So we looked at proposing starting pay at 85 for zero...
So we looked at proposing starting pay at eighty-five for zero to twenty-nine days and then thirty to fifty-nine, move it up to ninety-five dollars and then sixty or more, move it up to a hundred and five dollars. Our goal, right now, our substitute, currently right now, up to date, today, we're at a ninety-two percent fill rate of substitutes. The eight percent are the teachers that step up when we can't find anybody else. That's probably what board hears sometimes when they talk to teachers. I don't know if any incentive will ever stop some teachers from subbing. It's like I can use myself as an example. I love to sub. It was a good opportunity for me when I talk, I did it. There are some that do like that, others that do not. Our goal with this proposal is to keep subs, or keep guest teachers here longer, pay them more. And then our, our goal would be is to look at the data and see if, have we lowered the amount of internal subbing that we have? Have we added more subs? Currently, right now, we have three hundred and eighty-seven guest teachers. And as you know, as the spring comes, more, more absent rates go up. And our goal is to pay them more so that we have more subs at the end of the year when the weather gets nice, people get sick, subs stop coming. We want to try to entice them to be a part of our district and really build our brand. So this is our first attempt at trying to raise that sub pay. I think on the board packet that I shared with you is forty-four thousand. We ran our numbers a little bit closer and it's right around thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars that you used last year's sub data for next year. So we're, we're predicting right around forty thousand dollars. That comes from our substitute budget for next year, but we think it's time to try something. I don't know if this will be the solution, but I do think, I've looked at other school districts and what they do is they do do tier pay. Some districts, it might be easy to say, just pay them ten dollars more. But if we were just to pay the teacher, the guest teachers ten dollars more, that's seventy-three thousand more dollars next year if we just raised it ten dollars. So we are looking to be fiscally responsible, but also rewarding our guest teachers who are going to be here and stay in every district. So that's the proposal I shared.
I have a question. So is zero to twenty-nine, that resets the calendar year, so you earn that.
Wait, I look again, so this is a proposal going into next year. So obviously it's going to reset coming into this year. Of course, I don't know that that needs to be the case. So I believe that part of the other benefit of incentivizing substitute teachers to spend more time with us is that it also enhances the quality of the guest teacher pool. If somebody has spent sixty days with us, they have a better understanding of the teacher, of the responsibilities, the district, the buildings that maybe they're subbing at. So we're not operating under that assumption that the following year it will just set, you know, set back down, I think whatever rate that a substitute has gotten to. So if they sub sixty-one days this year, get to the highest rate of pay, I think that's absolutely a conversation that we could have as we roll into next year as to whether we would want to keep the substitute, their guest teachers at whatever rate that they're at.
I actually ran into one today who is a retired teacher in our district and said she's thinking of leaving because she can go elsewhere and make a hundred and five a day. So, you know, I think we really are, everybody else around us is higher. So I would pour something like that where it's not that they have to reset every single year because, I mean, thirty days, that's a lot of subbing that somebody does to get just to ninety-five and they can already be making a hundred or a hundred and five or a hundred and ten elsewhere.
Well, that's my concern too, because I don't understand how that entices guest teachers to come here initially if they can go to another district and make a hundred and five right off the bat. I totally understand the financial barrier that we have, but, I mean, I get it, but I don't because we're not, we're not raising the lowest, we're still starting at eighty-five dollars. So I don't know how you attract them.
Because I think we have like three hundred and eighty-seven guest teachers is enough to have in a district our size. But to get to more days is what we're looking for. So the way I look at this is it may not entice people because we're still the low number, but hopefully the ones that stay with us and are loyal to CUSD two hundred get paid more as they do more. And that's, that's what we're composed on, to try and raise that money. It doesn't seem like a lot, but at least recognizes their commitment to our district.
Does the ninety-five or one oh five, is that in a, is that more, is that more equal to the districts both geographically around us and our benchmark districts?
Because it gets us closer to a lot of the districts that we compare to. Right now at eighty-five, I think Lyle, I think one district that's still at eighty-five. Most districts have gone to under or over. So we're trying to get in the ballpark, but we also know, we also know there are some constraints financially. So we're trying to balance those two with this proposal.
So their tiers start at a hundred or a hundred and five and go higher than that?
Different districts have different tiers. Like I looked at Oswego and they have different, different benchmarks of when they go up. And that's where we got the idea, we looked and saw how Oswego did it. So different districts do have it, some just have flat rates. District that came from has a flat rate. It just depends on how we want to tackle those. This is a way we thought we could at least try and see if it works. You know, if you don't see the data next year, you might be coming back to you this time next year saying, we need to raise again, or we need to try differently. This is just kind of our first start at trying to address basically the guest teacher shortage. And it's not just our district. I don't know if if we paid the same as every district around us, if we would be much higher than a ninety-two percent fill rate. Districts around us are struggling with guest teachers. They may pay more than us. So I don't know if money is the only thing because we just have a shortage. And that's the truth. I mean, when you look at teaching, I think I shared this with you before, and if I haven't, think of the state of Illinois, if there were a hundred thousand teachers in the farm system. The state of Illinois through certification and different decisions, the teaching pool has dropped two-thirds of a hundred thousand. So we're, we have less teachers in the state, which means we have less people that are hungry, want to sub. It's our goal, I mean, you even mentioned like a retiree, Dr. Schuler and I are looking at possibly, what would we pay retirees? We're still looking into that, not ready at this presentation, but it was a proposal that said in the past, we'd pay retirees a hundred and fifteen dollars. Like two thousand and eighty, we cut their, their price to eighty-five. That was when we made big cuts in the district. So we are looking at all aspects. I feel like this will help increase our spring, you know, winter and spring rates where we struggle with it.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Do we have a soliciting, feedback from the subs, the guests and teachers that we're using? And there are things like, I'm guessing, or I've heard down the street, that there are a decent number of subs who work either for us or for other districts. And so on any given day, if they're looking at what's available and they see they can go here for eighty-five or they can go not too far away, or they're bump, but they're always going to go there, including the idea that they might change their mind if they see something better out there, which creates chaos on top of short.
We know that that does happen. I mean, a lot of subs, especially they, this is what they do, is they substitute, they guest each, they are going to look at different jobs.
But do we, do we ever ask for feedback from our subs to get a sense of, are you working for multiple districts? What is he like about working here? What would make you choose us versus them? It's not always all pay, I'm sure.
No, it's not always all pay. We do lose some to the pay. We do get informal feedback from some guest teachers that say, you know, hey, I could take a job over here with more money. That's what got us to start looking at this. So we haven't done a survey of all of our guest teachers, but we do know the data of surrounding districts where we're at. And anecdotally, Lisa, our substitute person, Lisa Dillo, brings people in. She says there's a lot of subs that are in four or five different districts. So the way it is now electronically, when I subbed, it was like people made a phone call. You either took it or not. Now it's electronic, they can choose three or four different districts, which one they want. Even if it's a hundred and twenty-five here, they may want, they might want wellness over here. They drop that job and go to another. That happens in every district that's out there. So there is, the guest teachers do look at what job they want and they do pick.
Secondly, have we ever had a history or have we discussed the idea of a different rate for a long term, meaning something over, so two weeks in the same position?
We do.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, we do pay our permanent subs. We do have a higher rate for our permanent subs.
What's, can you define permanent sub for me?
Um, yeah, so our permanent subs, I believe, when I looked at it, and I got a hundred and fifteen dollars. So we do like if it's a semester and it's a longer break, we do pay our permanent subs. And this proposal will not make it. This proposal will not make it. So if I sub ninety more days, I'm actually going to make more money than somebody who does permanent sub. We wanted to make sure, we didn't want to go over our permanent sub. Right, because when we're talking about permanent subs, when we're talking about a quarter semester, somebody who really puts in a lot of time, we do have a higher rate for that.
Judge, I can just ask a clarification, so I'll make sure we're talking about the same thing. So there's two concepts, there's a long-term sub. So somebody that's coming in to cover a leave with somebody, which is different from our definition of a permanent sub. So we also have buildings that have the ability, they do hire a sub that we're guaranteeing daily employment for half the year. So both of those situations exist, but, but they're paid at the, at the higher, at the higher rate.
Do all buildings have that permanent sub? Does that just say that buildings have one?
For a long-term, like if somebody's on maternity leave and has a whole semester, what we do is we do actually, if it's not paid in an hour, they maybe contract them, like where they're actually like a contract. So if somebody's out, then we also have permanent subs at ninety dollars as well.
That's what I'm saying, like every day.
Yes, we do have that, yes. So it just depends on the length of it. What we're trying to do is make sure we don't pay the subs too much, that we're not getting the subs for those permanent, like semester, quarter, long absences.
Did I just did some quick math, right? So if somebody guest taught every single school day, they would still struggle to make twenty thousand dollars a year. So we're not talking about large salaries or large numbers. I think that's reality, just, we need to be aware of that, right? The math is pretty compelling.
Just to understand this a little better, when we, you know, I can, let's say in high school, I can understand where an existing teacher would occupy a subclass, because they may have an open period or something. Is that correct?
Yeah, so when you're a teacher and then we can't find somebody, that eight percent, there's somebody at each building that goes and asks different teachers assistants that have teacher license. They may ask teachers, in every building, there are go-to people that say, hey, I want it.
For that?
For that purpose. I want that open period, I want to be able to go in and teach.
Okay, so when we do that, that, that teacher that volunteers to do that, let's say at the high school again, because they had an open period, they get paid something. And that's based on a contractual rate or what?
That's a contractual rate.
Okay, and is that per hour or per day or how does that work?
Yes, it's thirty dollars an hour. So like last year, we were at about sixty-seven thousand dollars we paid teachers to do internal subbing. So thirty dollars an hour.
Okay, so that works at the high school primary.
High school, middle school.
Middle school, there's still rotation enough.
Right, and I know in elementary school, when they're short, they'll go to TAs that have teaching license. They'll go to other teachers that do have, that are free that day. I mean, buildings have permanent subs too, that you could pull. Sometimes if a building doesn't use a permanent sub, we can move that permanent sub to another building. We've tried. There's a lot of different ways that we're attacking this. But we do have the teacher subs, which cost us sixty-seven thousand last year. We have the retirees are at eighty-five right now. We have permanent guest teachers at ninety dollars. And buildings have permanent teachers for each building. Some principals have, get them hired and full and they're there. Some, they're still looking. A long-term sub rate is a hundred and fifteen dollars a day, just so you have kind of a.
Okay, but just go back to the question I had. So if we have a teacher that's, let's say, six hours of coverage is needed and it's done by staff, that's going to cost us a hundred and eighty a day?
It does, it costs more money if we do our own staff.
Okay, so this is why we want to get more subs, or more guests.
We would like to lower that sixty-seven thousand dollars. I don't, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, so I can't tell you this would, but our goal is, our data would be, how much do we pay, how many, how much do we pay internal subs next year? Is it less, is it more?
So the forty-seven thousand, or forty-four thousand dollar number, you've taken into consideration what we're paying to staff as well?
I can't say for sure that if we raise the money as you go, zero to thirty, thirty to sixty, that that sixty-seven thousand dollars that we pay right now would go down. So I do think there are teachers that want to do that, but our goal is to lower it. Because what we're hearing from our teachers is that some of them are, really don't want to go and sub while it's a blank period.
I guess I'm trying to understand with the forty-four thousand dollar number.
Yeah, so that's just straight based on the number of sub positions we had last year and what we're currently paying them at our current rate versus what we would have paid those folks at the tier rate. So to answer your question, no, it is not taking into account what could be an offset or a savings from that internal sub. That's just a straight, like dollar for dollar, higher rate, that's what you're going to pay?
I think we should monitor that, is my point. Because we may find that we have the opportunity to increase these further because of the savings we made out of the way. You know, I, I don't, you know, again, I don't have a good feel for what, you know, what we're saying here on attracting subs, but you know, if it's an economic issue, that, that becomes a way of saving those dollars otherwise being paid. You know, as we talked at the community engagement item, you know, that gets us into other compensational issues on pensions and all kinds of things. So, you know, realistically, I think that, you know, this seems, I think Rob touched on it was, you know, it's a low number realistically. And I, I think to the extent we're spending more in that category, that should be really part of this forty-four thousand offset, you know, the best we can track it.
We hope to, I mean, we're in a monitor.
Well, we have to think it's going to happen. I mean, you know, if we're, if we're filling, I assume every classroom is ultimately filled by some. So if, if the staff is doing twenty-five percent of that, how much are you pricing? You know, there's clearly a saving there.
Again, but just, just for context, so that, that number's a big number, right? Sixty-seven thousand dollars. But your, your substitute budget on an annual basis is north of a million dollars. So the internal piece of that overall sub budget is a, is a small chunk of that. So the vast majority of your sub costs do not come from paying people internally. The vast majority of your sub budget come from paying external subs, right?
Or it's still forty-four thousand dollars a year. I mean, that's the additional.
Yeah, that's the additional. I'm just saying in the, in the context of when we, we, we talk about perhaps lowering that piece, I think there's a meaningful opportunity to lower it, but, but as a chunk of the overall sub budget, still more than ninety percent of your substitute costs come from substitutes not filling.
I understand, but I, I think again, to truly evaluate a number, we have to know if there's a savings over here that offsets something, you know, to achieve. And I'm curious, this will become effective next calendar year, next school year, next school year, so. I don't know, you know.
We sometimes have to go keep in mind, when we need an internal sub, it could be for a class period and there you want to go internally, because otherwise you're going to pay a minimum of a half a day.
That's why, that's why I'm sure we will never lower, I mean, there's still going to be internal subbing. Somebody gets sick right now, you don't have time to give a sub, we pull from the building. So you are right, there's a lot of different pieces. But our goal would be is to look at that number, how many internal subs did we have compared to what we had and see if we had savings, see if it worked. We will use the data to, to address this and assess it. If it doesn't, then we may be coming back in a year from now, trying another proposal. And just know our goal is to not just keep paying eighty-five dollars, like we want to try something.
What about aid, sub aid, guest teacher, sub aid, or is, is that being looked at at all? Because when, when a teaching assistant is absent and we need to get a substitute in there, it's even lower than this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this proposal is just for teaching positions. So this is, this is addressing the classroom with the kids, not necessarily the TAs. There are times that we'll grab a TA. If it's not essential, have a TA come in and give a sub and we pay them a substitute.
Do we have a problem filling those TA sub positions though?
Yeah, it's not unlike any district. TA positions are tough to fill in a shortage. You know, guest teachers, substitute teachers have a choice. And TA positions are sometimes difficult to fill.
So to be clear here then, we're talking, the current sub grade is the eighty-five dollars.
Right.
And so we're keeping that the same for someone that's doing twenty-nine, or twenty-nine days?
Less than thirty days.
Is that, is that, let's say your example of somebody comes in for one period because somebody gets ill during the day, is that a full day's effort or is that an hour that accumulates or?
If somebody just comes in, it's a period, it's one hour, you pay them thirty dollars.
But does that count as a full day as far as the pay scale?
No, no, a teacher would be paid the periods or the hours that they actually.
Not the period, not the teachers, but the guest teacher.
I don't think you see us bring a guest teacher in for less than four. Right, if they're in, they're in for generally a full or half day, you're not going to bring a sub in for like.
Okay, all right, so that's where we use, we're going to continue to use the existing teachers. Again, that makes me feel more like these are really only full, full day, half day kind of costs. I, I, you know, again, I'm curious that we monitor this because this doesn't, isn't attracting enough to me. I, I, I think that it's, you know, you know, in the dollar amount here is, is in relative terms, I think, low, you know, forty-four thousand, and I do think there's savings.
But what do you mean low?
Well, it's just not a big number, it's not going to affect, I, I, I think it's, it's, it is a number, it's forty-four thousand. But if we don't have. But if we don't have to use existing staff to fill those full days, I'm getting a little confused whether we have existing staff that will do that, you know, is that offset, would that be offset?
And some part, again, I can't, it's really, really, really difficult again to predict. So of the sixty-eight thousand dollars that we spent on internal, how much of that can you cut out? Maybe some percentage of it? I don't honestly have a, and I don't know that there's adhesive data we could collect for you that would give you kind of a straight line answer to. We think we'll cut it by this amount because I really do think as Chris said, the number of times that we're filling an entire full-day position through cobbling together a lot of internal subs, I think that happens a lot less frequently than the, we have a teacher that needs to attend an IEP meeting and they need a sub for one period out of the day. Or again, we have a teacher who gets sick, has to leave the last period of the day. So somebody's going to cover, those are not situations where you're going to pull anybody in externally. If one of the internal, the permanent building subs is available, they may be slotted in there, but we're already paying them.
Yeah, I guess my confusion on that statement is that we're saying we only have ninety-two percent of what we need. So are the eight percent we're missing, the one-hour afternoon type things? Or are we missing full-day needs?
That means at the start of the day, so our fill rate with covered sub positions are at ninety-two percent. What happens to that other eight percent? Again, it could be that somebody else within a building is pulled to cover that classroom.
Which we pay a higher rate to.
No, we don't pay them. So there are people, so I guess my point to that could be, it could be a teacher's assistant in the building that we deem that they have the ability to be pulled from their current assignment and some, you know, for that day. So not all, the unfilled positions doesn't mean that we have classrooms that don't have somebody in them. In some circumstances, it could be that perhaps a specialist in the building covers that sub position for a day. There's no cost to that because it's already a salaried employee that's with us. But in some circumstances, yes, building is, you know, is cobbling, you know, positions together. But it's really hard to say exactly.
I guess as long as we're covering all of them adequately. And, you know, to me, the forty-four thousand, whether there's an offset or not, is a relatively low number compared to our hundred-and-sixty million dollar budget. This is my point. And so as long as we're effectively getting subs sufficient to perform the services required, you know, that's fine. You know, if this doesn't achieve it, then I think we have to give it further consideration. I guess to start, to start, you know, again, I keep hearing that it's not competitive.
Could we say, look at this year and say, if you were in our system this year and you taught, you were a guest teacher thirty-five days, next year we're starting you at ninety-five? Could we start that? Like, could that be a way where we're not asking people then to teach thirty-one, thirty days in our district this upcoming year? You've taught that many this year, like we take our current pool and we could start them then at the ninety-five for next year? Is that a possibility?
Sure, it's a possibility. I guess I, with due respect, I guess if the board does not feel like we're being aggressive enough with the proposal we brought to you, I'd rather you either table this or vote the agenda item down and ask us to bring something else back rather than try to throw another solution out sitting here at the table. Just because, again, I guess even from our level, we've thought through this proposal that we brought to you. If in any way it feels like it's being characterized as something we just copied together and threw at you, it's not, we put a lot of thought into that. But if you don't feel like it's aggressive enough and you're asking us to bring a proposal back that's going to have a higher price tag, we can do that.
I think to this question about, you know, do we have exit interviews, or not exit interviews, do I keep on available, you know, those, I guess those are things I'd like to know. I guess we'll find out if this works. You know, you've studied it, like you're saying, and so on. But I think it's just open a little bit to question, you know, from what I'm hearing on the board table. You know, again, I rely on the administration's interpretation of this, you know, but I want to make sure we, we've talked about this for many years, is my point. So I'd like to make sure we're getting appropriate coverage. If we think we need to change this mid-year, you know, maybe we change it mid-year if it's not achieving well enough. That's my biggest concern. I feel, you know, I'm not clear on a couple of concepts and, you know, obviously it's going to look at and so, you know.
Oh, sorry. I have one thing, I know you can do one more, but I fully support the model. And my point was not to question the aggressiveness of the model. My point was that, so it's not a lot of money relative to the overall budget. I think that's a fantastic point. Secondly, I'm very comfortable voting on this, the way it's structured. The challenge that we heard is there's, we're in a supply-constrained market right now, right? And this is one step we can take, and I support that step. I think what the board is exercising is trying to help brainstorm real-time, which probably isn't our role. But real-time, what else can we do to make this a more attractive destination, right? Why would someone want to say yes to us versus somebody else other than just cash? Is that even possible? Is that a factor in the market? I don't know. But, you know, that would be worth exploring after this. I think it's a great idea to try to brainstorm, what else can we do to be an attractive destination? And whether that's survey subs or other, see what other districts are doing or other industries. I fully support that idea as well. But I know that shouldn't be confused with this strategic proposal. I fully support this. I think it's very hard.
I have one quick question. The sixty-seven thousand internal cost, do we budget that?
Yeah. Yes, it's in our budget, it's in our substitute, guest teacher budget. Okay, let me kind of try to summarize what I think I'm hearing in the conversation. So it's a complicated issue. And what we've been hearing about, we've been hearing about teacher shortage and some of us have been hearing about it from within schools. This is a pain point for our current staff. There's a little bit of concern whether it's enough. Are we going far enough in terms of adjustments? But I think generally we all agree this is the first step. Probably something we want to monitor again during the course of the year, collect more data, do survey work. Probably would have to think about coming back here a year ago to kind of assess whether it's had the impact that we hoped, and if not, how do we tune it? So I think that's kind of what I heard. So the idea that Chris threw out about kind of my term grandfathering in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen is interesting. I don't know if we would, it's not part of the proposal tonight. So I don't know if we want to add that to it, or do we just want to kind of measure this year, twenty, this coming school year to see how it went without that, so.
My only concern was the, we are the lowest. That was my only concern. I like the idea of it. I'm very willing to try it. But that fact that we are the absolute lowest, I think a lot of people are choosing elsewhere because of that.
Well, and when I was running and met with all the principals, we tried to ask every principal about this. And I would say at least half of them were just flat-out pay. I mean, they just were very open about it, to pay. So, I don't know, I felt like I heard that directly from the principals. And I, but again, I understand the strict constraints and I think it's a place to start. And I do think that's interesting about grandfathering in. I don't know, is there any concern about, you know, guest teachers going, well, if I had that, maybe I would have...
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if there's like kind of a fairness issue there, you know, whatever, you know, I don't, maybe not. But I think it's a decent place to start. And I definitely didn't think this was just sort of a, let's throw this on the wall.
We've been looking at this all year.
Yeah, no, 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 and I know, and I definitely didn't take it like that. But I, I go with what Chris said, that it's just, our base is still the same, so.
Well, I agree with everything that's been said. My only concern here is I feel like this is the first time we're seeing this. I haven't seen any of the background information that we, either, has there been a committee, a board committee that's looked at all? You know, again, those are, I feel like we're getting too deep in what's, and it's, but it's because a little bit because I haven't seen a history of this. I've heard about the problem, but this is the first time I've seen a tangible proposal. You know, and it's raising the questions. And that's, you know, I think that's what's drawing the questions. I mean, again, I'll go with the start of this based on your recommendation. But, you know, it's, you know, I'd like background a little bit for our board.
Yeah, so what, Jim, what else would you need to tell us?
You know, again, you know, that forty-four thousand dollar number. The questions I asked, the forty-four thousand, how is that developed? Is there savings or not? I'm learning stuff as we talk. You know, that to me is committee work. You know, I don't like doing that at this level. You know, but those are just, again, when we looked at the bonds, we had alternatives, I guess, suggestions and so on. You know, so, you know, it gave us the ability to make alternative impact decisions and, you know, such as compensation or tweak of the ninety days or current subs. And what I'm hearing about what, you know, principals are saying. You know, those all should enter into the mindset of, you know, as we move into a process of approving. And I just think the background is generally helpful.
So does the board feel like they want more background on this decision or consideration of the option?
I think it's a good place to start. And I think, you know, I know a lot of thought has been put into this. And I think with the budget constraints that we have and, you know, knowing what's coming, everything, I feel like it's a good place to start. It's a good thing to try, you know, good policy to try. And like you said, we'll reassess in a year and see. You know, we were at ninety-two percent fill rate, which, you know, is decent and I agree with you. I know all the districts around us are having this issue too. And yeah, are we losing a few subs to pay? Sure we are. But at the same time, I think ninety-two percent is actually still really decent. And, you know, I would be comfortable, you know, moving forward with this to try for the year.
I had to reinforce what I said. I agree that this is an issue that's going to continue. Let's continue looking at it, but let's start somewhere. We've got to start with a plan and see how it works out before we try to spend more and more time on perfect. We don't know if it's going to work either. Okay? Okay, can I have a motion in a second to approve the proposal for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty guest teacher pay is presented? Moved by Mrs. Erickson.
Thank you.
Seconded by Mrs. Boothon. Mrs. Hutchinson, please call it all.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Boothon?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
I vote no.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
The motion passes. That's it for our action items. We have two oral reports tonight. The first one on our student learning feature. This is the office.
So tonight I want to highlight some of the work of our library learning centers. This is a graphic that I used at the last presentation where I talked about FIT and how we have to kind of learn faster and govern smarter and use a lot of our resources to be more agile and collaborative. And I want to show some of the work from our library learning centers. So first of all, how we use those people. You might have think LLC directors are like a book checkout and ordering books. That's kind of the last thing I have down here on the resource and support for English language arts. But in our district, they also are part of the FIT leadership team piece with the principals and a committee member. And they come to our FIT retreat and they really drive a lot of that. They are instructional tech coaches. They work with Lee and with Rod to be on hand to learn a lot of the things to be the go-to person in the school to be able to do that. We train them on the social studies model and inquiry and had them be part of the training for all of the elementary staff on that. They train with us and work collaboratively with the grade levels on the engineering projects with those. They are in charge of our universal access to the school. They house our devices to do checkout for our students and families that need that. And they've been a huge push and amplify the student voice because they manage the production equipment and a lot of those pieces at the school. So I wanted to make sure that, I kind of give a shout out to them on how much their job has changed just in the six and seven years that we've been working on this whole piece. I also wanted to talk a little bit about those spaces. Sometimes you think of a library or a learning center as quiet places for books. This really has turned into quite a few spaces for teachers and students to collaborate. And they have to move right from one little tiny space to be able to open it up to have a large group presentation. And there's a lot more parts of the LLCs in the libraries that students own. And students come to do their own work and want those pieces. And we're really moving the pictures that are down here from the student being the consumer of other things that people have written in the library to being producers of their own information to put out there. And that's kind of the emphasis of what we've done. I also wanted to just flip through and show you some of our spaces that have changed. This is Madison where they have some new places and furniture. And you notice that it's all on wheels and it stacks and moves back and forth pretty easily. At the high school, learning this new word, everybody's talking about generifying, where you take these things and put them in different genres so that students can copy things easier. Wheaton's getting ready to put in a new recording space. Woody Ear, this is more of the vastest of information and books that are easy for students to grab and to take and to work on. This is Lowell with all their new furniture and how lightweight and comfy and pieces it is. This is Hubble being ready to go to a green lawn and a recording studio. But even just with this, they're being inundated with students and staff that are wanting to use this area. Edison has redone, taken out the big circulation desk, but you really don't need that space for anymore. And you can see the green screen in the production studio that's there. And then Pleasant Hill is highlighting some of the things they've gotten from Student Excellence Foundation. But as I show you this slide at Emerson, it's not always a whole lot of high-cost things. This is just dry erase tables that were made and that are now there for students to work on, erase, collaborate on, have a big creative ideas. So really quickly, I wanted to just shout out to the agile and collaborative use of our LLC directors and their choices. Questions?
No, just one comment. I love this, you know, if you go back to our facility master plan from several years ago, the library modernization is one of the core components of this. And I get the opportunity to go into a lot of schools. If you look at a twentieth century school versus a twenty-first century school, one major, major difference is that LLC, the library needs them. It's definitely a different environment now. I applaud our individual schools and PTAs trying to transform themselves, kind of on the cheap. But as I think about personally, kind of all this work we're going to do for the capital needs and the budget allocations, excuse me, the one thing that's kind of hanging out there that I wish we could do at some point is libraries. That has a direct impact on kids. And I acknowledge, you know, the role of the director is definitely changing. They're not just sitting at a desk and be for kids to check out.
Right, we're training students to do checkout.
One commercial, I just, if you're a Twitter person, follow the LLCs on Twitter. They're doing some really cool stuff. Every day I see things, every day I see something. It's awesome.
I read Champions of FIT.
Just follow up on Brad's comment. We, in the referendum four years ago, we, you know, we had money in that referendum for...
Seems like forums too.
Well, two, sorry. Two years ago. We had money in there for LLC expansions in numerous schools. I guess my, and somebody the other night at the community engagement workshop or whatever we went up, asked the question, what are we missing by the fact, you know, or where are we trading off dollars? You know, I felt that we're probably doing that somewhere and I believe the LLCs are that. And I guess my question is, how are we, how are we, I don't want to use the word deficient, but how are we working around that? And how would, what could have been, I guess, I mean, you know, what was the thing we're missing, I guess? You know, that would have been ideal if we had passed and we've been able to fund the LLCs as you discussed.
We didn't get too far down the planning to say this is where it's all going to be. But some of the things that you dream about on parts of this are having more quickly adaptable pieces where we're not writing a little grant, asking the PTA for funds, looking at that. We definitely need more production studio equipment. We definitely could use a lot more training for staff to be able to access and know how to use video and do those pieces that go along with that. There's also a little production element of that, like, okay, they've made it with the green screen, but where are the TVs and the things to be able to collaboratively put that out there and make those spaces? And you have visited, and I know you have the library at North, we have the collaboration space and then the screen right there that people can share off. All of our schools should have those spaces so that they have that ability to collaborate and display. And some schools are doing the workaround, like Woody Ear's put up some screens and are trying to figure out how to do that. But it is kind of pieced here and there and it is dependent on how much money that school can raise.
Some of those equipment, but most of that was... Some of those equipment, but most of that was not part of the referendum, which I'm calling, the equipment was an external piece. It was, it was mostly building and, you know, more substantive, you know, fixed facilities that was, was in that original proposal and that, you know, again, so the equipment actually was outside, so.
Furniture was a part of that plan.
It was.
Yeah, so I think the way that we really, in the referendum plan, and the way that the libraries were, were described was almost as like a, like a kit of parts, right? So there were certain spaces that we wanted to create inside of each library learning center, whether they be small group collaborative areas, whether they be, you know, flexible furni- furniture spaces where different sized groups could come together, whole group spaces, like a central meeting space. There was kind of a defined kit of parts that we wanted to create inside each of the, the library learning center, but, but they're all not going to look exactly the same. So I think what you're, what you're seeing is like an example from each school of one of those elements of the kit of parts. What we ultimately wanted to create was all of this in every school.
For example, Edison has a little room that you can, that's close to this that you can do that. Not all of our LLCs have a room, and if you're just going to do a production studio in the corner of an already very busy library.
So that's what we, we gave up, or not gave up, we couldn't accomplish, right? And I get, you know, okay, and I guess in the, we'll call it the Sherman Dirges funding, we see that we're going to be, is any of that even addressing LLC? It's purely fixes and repairs and maintenance.
Yeah, I, I guess with the, I had a one carry out to that would be, in, in some cases, if we're replacing flooring, we've created some opportunity. Uh, this keeps cutting in and out. It's, uh, I don't know if the mic, but, uh, it just keeps dropping in and out. So i- in some cases, as we, as like, there's an opportunity to replace flooring, that may be an element that's in the, the plan, but furniture, any of that stuff is not part of Sherman Dirges, that's truly capital need.
Another thing, when I was meeting with the principals, that the last question I was asked, I said, if you could walk out of here on Friday and wave a magic wand and something changed when you came in on Monday. I was actually really surprised at how many principals said, "We really need to update our libraries." Like, it had to do with the library, that we need to change it. I was just really surprised by that. And I think, I remember in that, in the post-referendum survey, the library updates were the lowest, um, ranking item among public, you know, as to things that people drop. So I just thought there was, you know, that was really interesting to see that what, you know, what that was, but I think it's been great what the PTAs have been able to do, do what they have.
I think we have to call it something other than a library learning center. You know, I, I, again, when we called that, you know, the vision is that you're, you know, checking out books and doing that, you know, versus calling it a different kind of a, you know...
So this has turned into a facility committee.
No, it isn't. I think it is because I think it's, it really, we're talking about the, the spaces right on the topic. You know, I think, again, we're deficient on something, and it's, it's probably not sufficient.
We're doing, our schools are doing great with what they can, but really modernizing an LLC is about creating different opportunities for kids to be collaborators, be creators. That's really the objective, in my, in my view. So, um, I would love to have a conversation at facility committee level and see if there's a way to balance this. I know it's a lot of money, but we keep hearing about it, we keep seeing it, the schools are trying to do something, so give it down the road. Thank you. Next one is, uh, social emotional learning feature. Do you have anything else to tell us after the last meeting?
I do have some things to share, so, uh, once again, thank you for the opportunity to highlight social emotional learning. I promise, uh, this is just not made of a feature. I love some of the good work that's happening at your schools. There's a write-up in your board package as well. Um, so I am just going to highlight a, a recent event, uh, that I attended, actually both myself and Andrew Schuler attended, uh, at Hubble Middle School, but it happens at, at many of our middle schools. And, and again, it's an opportunity, um, where our high schoolers are taking a leadership role, and we're, we're showing some connectivity there. Um, but the, the premise of, of this ninety-minute assembly that, that we attended was around responsible decision-making at Hubble. And, and it started with our first responders from Warrenville educating our students, all of our eighth grade students, about the dangers of opioids and drug use. It then moved on to one of our staff members who has a, a very personal, uh, story, um, of, of a family member who's, who's suffered from drug use. And she shared that story with all of our eighth grade students. And from there, they brought in over twenty Wheaton-Morris South student leaders. And those students then took that topic and transcended it to making good decisions and being successful at Wheaton-Morris South High School. And, and first of all, I want to highlight one piece. Our eighth grade students for ninety minutes were fits, not only on the first responders, the staff member, but then our twenty student leaders from Wheaton South, Wheaton-Morris South. And, and I, um, I typically don't read word for word, but they gave ten tips to being successful at Wheaton-Morris South. And with each tip that they gave, they also role-played and, and played out situations. Um, and I will tell you in the discussion meeting yesterday at our EC twelve leadership meeting about the value that the high schoolers provided in providing that guidance around decision-making, that we believe it had a, a more movable message than, than our adults did, really, because it was, it was their, their peers, I believe. But ten tips that they shared, and many have correlations to social emotional learning. Your GPA starts now, except that people may change, talk about making good decisions around the people, about the people that you surround yourself with. Make the right decision in tough situations. They role-played many difficult situations that our future eighth graders as they get, our, our future high schoolers as they go into school will face, and how you can respond appropriately. Build relationships with your teachers. Again, we talked a lot about school connectivity, the power relationships, right? And there, they were taking the lead, saying, okay, you also take the lead, build relationships with them. We talked about the power freshman orientation. They really go deep into using social media to your benefit. And they educated students on the negative side of social media. Manage your time and be organized. Again, time management, self-management, big piece of our social emotional learning program. But also be yourself, own yourself, get involved and have pride. Um, so I, I just draw this to, to mention as a celebration, this also happens at Edison. Uh, this year it was also, this type of structure was, was tried out at Monroe. And while I said at Hubble, we also had a Franklin representative there checking this out so we can hopefully stabilize this type of work at, at all of our, at all of our middle schools and provide that opportunity for high school leaders. But again, the correlation to your social emotional learning lies in that responsible decision-making piece, but also all the other connections you've listed there. So thanks for, um, let me highlight that social emotional learning feature. Any questions?
I get to, you see this two years ago at Hubble, and it, it still sticks with me. And, you know, professionally, what I do for a living is, is substance abuse curriculum, and have the ability, have the opportunity to survey students in nine counties in the area. The number one thing they want is to hear from older students how to handle situations is the number one thing they want. So the more we can do that, I think the better off we are. So that's great.
Great. One other follow-up to that. Yesterday, uh, being a member of the Wheaton Lions Club, and Dr. Schuler is as well, and, uh, you know, I think we've been criticized for paying the dues for Dr. Schuler, not mine, but, uh, but, you know, the reason we attend those is they're public forums. And, and we had the DuPage County Sheriff speak yesterday. I asked him a question about what his position is on marijuana, which the state of Illinois thinks is the, the, one of the big bailouts. And, you know, everything I'm hearing as an individual is, is so contradictory to that being a good sell. And, you know, he, the sheriff was not positive on it at all. Uh, and I, I guess, I don't know whether it's our association, the school board association, in some way, how can we take a position on that if, if it's so desired or not? Because I, I can't see any win on that. I, um, you know, everything I'm hearing about it, all the studies I'm seeing on it are, are, you know, and then, you know, these type of events are, you know, reinforcing that. And it's, you know, I, I'm disappointed in our, you know, our legislative policy to consider. You know, if it's forced to, I mean, that's, that's terrible. But anyway, that's, that's all I want to say.
One thing I'll just note to this, tomorrow afternoon is a CL committee is meeting, so let's kind of follow up. And I think I saw the agenda, thinking about what we're going to do for the next four years. So the work can, work never ends, but it's going to continue tomorrow. Okay? Thank you. Um, discussion items. We have one discussion item tonight. Continuation of a long process of talking about policies. Um, Dr. Schuler?
Yep, so in your grade folders, I'm going to call your attention to a little package you have that, that very front cover says PRESS in very big letters. Um, and so we, at, at the board, last board meeting, uh, we went through a couple of policies that really had come through the, the Press Policy Review Service. I thought it might be useful to just take a quick step back and, and kind of remind the board, but certainly our, our two-year board members, kind of where we've been with the, the policy review process that, that we have. So, um, through the Illinois Association of School Boards, there is a model policy service that's called PRESS. And so PRESS, um, does in fact, um, produce or put out, it's a subscription service that puts together, um, kind of a model, uh, policy reference manual. And so when you think about the policies that we adopt in this school district, there are really two major elements to it. Part of it is compliance, right? So, um, there are, uh, there are hundreds of bills that pass every year that have some relation to school district, perhaps establish a new mandate or new expectation on how we approach it. And so, um, the, the PRESS service helps us ensure that our policies are in fact in compliance with the Illinois School Code. And the second element to, to policy is in, is in guiding our practice within the school district. So taking that model language, but obviously personalizing it to the individual needs of, of our community. Kind of a good example of how that happened recently, obviously, was through all the discussion around homeschool, and our policy does not mirror perhaps what the state level policy is, but that's because there, there was a, I think, a, a goal to customize the policy to, to our needs, right? So those are the two, two elements. So, um, when we talk about PRESS, um, and we talk about comparing our policy to PRESS, that's in fact what we're doing, is looking at kind of the, the model policy language and deciding how does that align to, uh, to, to what it is that, that we want to do. And so this year, the policy committee, um, did in fact, um, go through a policy customization, right now, we're, we're still in it, uh, process where, um, we looked at every one of our policies against, um, that policy reference manual. That started back, uh, in February when, uh, we met with a individual by the name of Ken Carter from, uh, the, the association, um, who did kind of an initial run-through of just a, a number of questions on our current practices and our policy manual. Um, on March eighth, he provided then a draft of, um, of the policy customization process, and the HR policy committee then met for three extended periods of time to literally go through every policy in our manual against, um, that, that recommended policy, and really, um, made a decision for each policy that it fell into kind of one of four buckets. One being, uh, that our policy was already fully aligned, so there was nothing to, to do around that. Um, that perhaps the PRESS language had what we deemed to be some non-substantive changes, just some wording adjustments that really weren't impacting the policy at all. Um, or that there were substantive language changes, uh, and that we were perhaps comfortable with what the recommended PRESS language was saying, but felt like the changes were big enough that they required kind of full board review. Or the last one, there were definitely a number of changes where we said, "We're not interested in aligning our current policy with the PRESS language because we like the way that our current policy reads and matches practice." And, and so that, those pieces of feedback then kind of went back to say, "We're, we're not, uh, interested in it." And so the spreadsheet that, uh, you have been attached to, um, those first two pieces of information, uh, really are all of the policies that fell in bucket C, right, on this list. So these are all of the policies where there is kind of what the policy committee deemed to be substantive language changes that require a little bit more than, um, the policy committee just, uh, just giving the, uh, the okay. And so at your last, uh, meeting, we went through, I think, the top one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, um, policies. And what you'll see as you go down is that, uh, there are, uh, I think another, uh, almost thirty policies, maybe a little bit more, that, uh, we went through in, in advance of today. And so, um, with the help of the, the policy committee and, uh, Jen was, uh, was, was a huge help in, in kind of helping to, to think through this, um, uh, there is a whole list of policies that we wanted to at least kind of get in front of you tonight. Again, with a reminder that you're not approving any policy tonight. Any change in policy is still going to come through your standard two-part review process where you would see a recommended change with the language and the policy that, uh, would get posted and then, uh, approved at the following meeting. But I think the last time even when we made the change or were considering the change around the homeschool policy, there, I think was, uh, was some concern in the board that you really wanted to kind of make sure you had an, an advanced look to make sure you really understood some of the, the changes that, that were being made. And so, um, uh, if, if I'm not stated, I clearly helped to clarify, but I think this, the goal in this was to give you kind of advanced notice of what those policies are that are going to come in front of you through that policy review process, and more importantly, what's the change? So, um, by each of those policies, you will see either a number or the letter D. Uh, if it is a number, there's a little coding on the, the back that, that kind of indicates what the purpose of that policy change is. We're either just removing language, um, from the policy, um, if it's a one, it's saying that we've added something to that policy that just reflects, um, current or planned practice. If it's a two, we're actually removing, um, that kind of local piece. If it's a three, we're removing the language of the entire policy to more appropriately represent kind of the procedure where we're at. Um, number four is that the essence of the policy, uh, is contained somewhere else. So we had some places where we had language in one policy, but it actually is, is better served elsewhere, or in fact was already addressed somewhere else in a, in a different policy, and so we're simplifying. If it's a, a five, that, uh, the language was really just updated to reflect new language within the school code, so that's kind of the mandated piece. Um, or the, or if it's six, it's just that it looks different, but is really saying the same exact thing for just, uh, kind of a, of a different wording. And so I think our goal tonight is to really go down through the policies that have a D, um, buy them to, to kind of talk about them. But kind of before we, we zip them through those, Jen, anything else you want to add to, to that?
Yeah, I, I would agree with the way you explained it. And, and some of those, um, you know, we just had parts of our policies that were redundant with other policies, so that's where we'll see some things. I had said that, um, some of the ones even that had a D, they may not have any big substantive changes, but my thought was it's going to look at first glance like, whoa, this is a different policy, then we should, you know, discuss it so that we make sure everybody's, um, comfortable with it and where they're going. Or understanding, you know, if a policy was three pages long and now it's one, where do those other pieces go? And, and in most cases, they either already were somewhere else, or they more, more appropriately belonged somewhere else. Um, and the other biggest chunk of taking pieces out was that we did look very carefully, um, at whether something was really policy language or whether it was implementation language or procedural. And so we're trying to take those pieces out, both to clean out the policy manual because it's this big, um, and to make sure that, um, I'm doing the whole, um, balcony floor thing where you understand that some of those pieces, um, more appropriately belong to the administration, not just that's their job, but also because it might be the kind of thing where this is, it might reflect the way we're doing things and executing a policy right now, but it, it's the kind of thing where if, if experience tells you maybe tweak it, you don't want to have to keep going back to the board to approve that. That's kind of what I'm getting at.
So do you mind going through all the pieces?
Yeah, can we do, uh, do those run down through? So the, the first one, uh, three, four, oh, um, is your policy that defines the duties of the superintendent. Um, and so if you pull up our current version of that policy, you'll see a whole And so if you pull up our current version of that policy, you'll see a whole series of numbered items that specifically outline job responsibilities of the superintendent. The "Press" model policy does not have those pieces, because I think the assumption is that those are embedded in the job description under the superintendent, don't necessarily need to be reflected in the specific policy. And so really, the question around that is, your current policy really is a combination of policy and job description, just rolled into one, can stay that way if you prefer for it to stay in policy, or kind of just a whole list of numbered items can be in essence pulled out of the policy and just put into a written job description, which is something we do maintain for all administrative positions.
I would also add that in the committee, we didn't go through numbers one through twelve to determine whether they're all appropriate, whether you changed anything, because our thinking was they don't really belong in the policy in the first place, and they may or may not reflect what our current job description and our contract letter superintendent shows. So we didn't, we had them one way or the other.
So will that information be somewhere else, which is not in the policy, but it's something that the public can still access? Okay, that was my only comment.
First thing, I'm fine either way I worry about, we've got twelve items. Is there a thirteenth that you're responsible for, so I'm kind of leaning towards taking out the list and pulling it out somehow?
Especially if we set goals for that here, they might vary, and you have other priorities that we want to have in there, that we'd be constantly getting the post-policy review against, you know, almost a sixty-day process.
Okay, next one. The next one is over to the second page, 620, that's your policy that talks about school calendar and day. So the current "Press" policy no longer has a required moment of silence at the end of, or the beginning of each school day. That was a state law for a brief period of time that you had to introduce a brief moment of silence at the start of the day. That law was later changed and pulled out, but it still appears in our policy, our version of policy 6.20. And so the way that the "Press" policy was reworked, it simply indicates that we will observe all required state observance. So if the state did revert a law and say, "You now have to do a brief moment of silence again at the beginning of the school day," we're going to do it because it's state law. But I think, as is often the case, sometimes those things kind of change and fluctuate, so that appeared to be better language than the required.
So that language about the state observance is meant to be vague, because there aren't, really there aren't any?
There are some, like you say, the Pledge of Allegiance. There are certain requirements around like content of what you have to address, so when we waive certain holidays at home school, right? There are certain state requirements on what you do then on that day to address. So there are some elements, but I think you're right, the language is definitely written to be, I think, intentionally vague or to catch all...
It's really all encompassing.
All encompassing as those things change, because they do.
Consistent with what we just talked about on the next screen. Okay, six.
6.300. Yep, so Faith, do you want to pick up the next couple, because they're out of section six?
All right, so the next one regarding graduation requirements, there's some outdated language in even "Press" about state assessments and those pieces, so we're just changing it a little bit to be generically about state assessments. And then there are a few changes in there about, we had some pieces about re-enrollment in those things, but it was really duplicated in another piece, so we're going to go ahead with the "Press" piece. We are looking at graduation requirements as part of the, I know we're going to have a discussion at the next meeting of which we're going to graduate, but we do want to take in that piece, and then we might revise it later after we get to which we're going to graduate.
So one question I had on 6330.
On 330?
330, the comment, your board feedback, local board approval for donations. I didn't understand that.
Actually, it's not, so we had one. What that, under, I think, that policy, under achievement and awards, there's actually a language in "Press" that just indicates that if any of, if there are any donations that are being used to support awards given to kids, it may be approved by the board.
So I can just redo the statement off of that, going down to the next one. So that was 6300, now it's 6330. The new statement in "Press" is, "All donations for awards, honors, and scholarships must receive the Board of Education's prior approval." And then the only slight variation from "Press" is that it lists that we will do class rank and we do not do classroom.
So if we adopt the "Press" policy, are we going to be in class rank?
No, no, no. So that's one thing, we moved on the edit sheet back to the "Press" is that they, it will get pulled out, so we will not have the language on class rank, but we will have the language, just talks about grade, one average, and last honor roll, but it has that additional statement that just indicates if there are any donations to support honors and awards that are approved.
To clarify, is that every year it's awarded, or just the first time it's established?
My assumption practically would be that if it's a recurring award, you're probably approving it the first time that it's established, and whether it's intended to be a recurring or...
That's my understanding as well.
And how's that been our practice in the past? I know those awards exist.
Yeah. Yeah, I've never brought the recommendation for a scholarship or award. Again, I, there are not many awards that we give out that actually have like a donation associated with it. So even though there are a lot of awards that are given out at the high schools, I mean, most of them don't necessarily have a financial donation behind unless it's a scholarship.
Well, I have one that comes to the top of my, one of my kids had a classmate who died in high school, and her parents, and at least for some number of years, was giving him a scholarship to a student that was going into the same field of study that their child would have gone into. So is that the kind of thing that we're now saying would come to us to approve that before that's awarded? Is that something we want to do?
Not awarded, created.
Created, right, no, that's okay. Not picking the recipient of the award, but just the fact that we're allowing it.
Yeah, because you're in essence accepting it as a donation, as you would any other donation to the school district.
So would be the PTA Scholarship Awards, the Booster Scholarship Awards, like all that, next year we would be going through like a big blanket of those, right?
My assumption would be, or again, as we're moving them forward, I mean, there are a number of donations that are already established and were given established at a time that there was a different set of policies, I think it may, or you could choose to interpret, that will apply to any new donation that comes forward, that is given under a time that this would be a policy of this.
Okay.
Moving on, there's actually one more on the Mac. 8.25, which is advertising and distributing on school property. So your current policy around the sale of advertising space requires board approval based on an amount. So if we're selling an advertising space and access, I think it's a thousand dollars, that requires board approval. The way that the new language would read is that it's not based on amount, it's based on location. And I think here's the thought process around that. So advertisements that may perhaps be sold in a music program, right? That's a one-time event, goes in the music program, it's distributed at that concert, but after that concert is over and that program is done, right, that advertisement is over, that's different than selling space that's really in essence permanently affixed to a building or a structure at a building. So you're going to sell advertising space at a fence around your stadium, that's up for a longer period of time, that would require board approval because you're allowing something to be, in essence, advertised in a physical space. It doesn't necessarily, although the agreement may, so as we sell perhaps advertising space on a new scoreboard, it may be that there's a five-year cycle around that that's a part of it, but it's really saying that board approval would be required if we're selling advertising space on any physical structure within the school building, advertising in a program, or any of those like one-time events, that would have building approval, right, the building infrastructure.
What about what the advertising is? So if we sell space on a scoreboard, we would approve that advertisement? For your example, five years, we're proving that advertisement?
Correct.
They pull out, somebody else wants to go in?
That it has to be approved by the board.
Just so you know too, their directories that go out when they're there for an entire year often have advertising space, so that's not a program, it's not a fixed structure, but it's something that's in somebody's home for, say, a year. Is that covered in here at all, or is that different?
Would be covered, and that would not be considered a physical space, so that would not be board approval, that would be building approval, for the new language.
So like at the high school, I know it sounds like they have those banners in the gym, you know, different vendors, so each one of those we would have to approve?
When they go up, yes.
Because we've done that in past, I don't recall ever voting on it.
So the last example, Jim, would have been actually with when you accepted the scoreboard itself. So there was a group that came together, fundraised, put together that new scoreboard itself, and the board did in fact approve, allowing that to happen with the advertising space.
Okay, and they, the group had developed, had the advertising already sold?
They had a lot of it, I think, sold at the point that they brought it.
So we had to prove the board itself, and as a byproduct, whatever they had sold?
So when this comes to us for posting, I think the one thing that I'm going to be looking for is not just the location, but does the board have some latitude about approving certain types of advertisements, what the message is, what the company is, what the product is? It's kind of what I'm going to be looking for in this. You might say, "Oh yeah, advertising the scoreboard is great," but it depends what it is.
And that would be part of the pool.
I want to make sure we have that latitude in that.
You have the latitude, because I think we will, and I think some of that language is actually in the policy bracket, but that's exactly why we come to the board, because ultimately you're comfortable with whatever that entity is being affixed to a building or...
So these banners, like they put up at the fence around football games, I don't know what they've been giving for, but let's assume it's less than a thousand dollars and just say they haven't voted on it. But now we would be voting on even one of those. Okay, sounds like we're all on board with that when it comes to us. And what about the timing on that? Because I don't know, I don't know the process, but you might that far on when that would be implemented.
The policy?
I don't know what the process is say for these banners that the boosters do, but they're probably working on that right now for the fall. Would this be in place for this year?
Again, I guess going to depend on how quickly we work through the policy. So right now, the policy that's on the books is the policy that's on the books. So if anything happens to be sold in the next thirty days, I think it will, but that would operate under the existing policy. My anticipation, just based on kind of timeline and moving the project forward, I believe in the next week, we will have kind of an adoption-ready version of all of these policies, meaning that we should be able to in June. Anything identified on here, that would come forward as part of a policy posting agenda, so probably a June-July approval process, so I think you'll be...
I guess the only concern I have is that, again, I don't know really how it works. Let's assume it's a couple people on the booster board taking care of it, and now we're throwing a different process in. Are they going to be able to react to it, or are we going to have enough time to get it done so they get upon an audit?
Yeah, I think you will, I think only in the fact that a new policy to some degree is going to be substantive. I'm saying, if you're putting anything up at a stadium, it's got to have board approval, so before you can say, "Okay," or whatever you're going to sell it for, that's got to come to the board, I would think.
Do you have any idea how many ads we're talking about here? You know, as far as, so they're in the gymnasiums, they're at the baseball field, they're at the football field. That's a lot of ads, you know? And I just, you know, I think to Dave's point, you know, and I don't know if it's just spreading around being like, yep, you know, or I don't know if they're going to be like a, you know, like a brand book or something, you know what I mean, that they have to adhere to, or is it just making sure like...
I don't think it's as many as you think. Because I mean, if you go into our gyms and even look at perhaps like banners that are up by the scoreboard, there's not, there's not that many. We're not talking about like hundreds of advertisements. You might be talking about a couple each year in new advertisement pieces. So it's not, I don't think it's going to be as significant of a volume as...
So if they're approved one year and they want to do it again, we don't have to approve it again?
I guess depends partially on the kind of the term that it's sold. So oftentimes when the banners go up, they go up over a multi-year period, that would be part of the approval that would come in front of the board. But again, we're not, volume-wise, you're not talking about massive volume.
I was just trying to think it out when I was looking at them. Like I thought there were, you know, eight, you know, hanging along the wall, just because I noticed them because I knew one of the women who was, you know, advertising it.
And again, in a lot of cases, so like what you see inside, and Bill feel free to add to this, because you're involved in that, oftentimes those advertisements go perhaps with the scoreboard project, right? So new scoreboard is putting in, part of the agreement is these eight companies are going to agree to help fund that scoreboard with the agreement that they have a five-year, you know, recognition that's up there. So even inside the gyms, a lot of those aren't turning over on an annual basis, they were part of a targeted project.
I think I'm going to use media for that, okay.
In my eight years going to events at Northerly South, I don't think I've ever once looked at one and thought, ooh, you know? I think it's a good policy to have, I think it's a good process, I just don't think implementation's going to be a massive hurdle. So let's see how the policy comes to us when we post it?
I think the only other comment I have is that we can't be restricted, you know, if there's a dentist putting up an ad, we can't say, you know, this other dentist, because somebody doesn't like him, we can't restrict him. So I mean, I think it's the message that's more significant than the ad, so I've seen that as a problem.
Okay, I think we've got directions, right? So it was all the D's. So what are the next steps? In June, we'll have a whole bunch of policies to post, and we can anticipate a lot of reading?
That's one committee that wants that.
Jen volunteered to continue, I think.
Thank you for not conducting.
Okay, so you got all the directions you needed, okay. Okay, we have a few written reports here, the monthly financial reports, the FOIA report is noted, we've got now our, I think, our third early learning center construction report, and the Citizens Advisory Committee, the CAC report. Any questions on any of those?
I have a comment on the financial report. Basically, it looks like we're going to have enough money not to have to borrow money, and one of the reasons we have the 25% fund balance policy. It helps us avoid borrowing, and this is the time of year that we've run out of money. That policy is significant.
Any other questions on the written reports? Just a clarification on my end, the Citizens Advisory Committee report, are those going to be posted on our website, or do we have those now posted on our website?
We do not.
Minutes?
Well, you have it posted on the website, and the fact that they're posted with the board agenda, and that isn't fact on our website.
They're attached to the posting? I mean, I'm not sure what we got versus the public. Like minutes of those board meetings. We have them obviously here.
That's, it's public.
That is posted on the public.
Board site, so.
But there's not a link on our cysd200.org website that somebody can click on to see the CAC.
There's that.
Okay, next is report from board members. There was several board committee reports noted. Questions or comments on any of those? Okay, the next one is other reports from board members?
I just have one, real quick. I went to the Wheaton North Music Award thing last night, and it, I'm sure it happens a lot and doesn't get recognized, and I just want to share what I learned. There was a group of orchestral students this year who on their own, I think organized four or five of them, and then on a regular basis, they've been going over to a retirement center and playing for the residents. I mean, it just, it touches you, right? That they thought of it, they organized it, and they did it. It's awesome. So just kudos to Wheaton North Orchestra.
Did we have anybody, I saw in the news today, TCD had a signing day for trades. Did we have any of our students, they were signing to, that they were permitting to do a trade? It was an interesting thing, I was wondering if it was any of our students.
I got the same, I don't, for sure, I'm sorry, you're looking at me, but I know, I got the same thing. I thought that was really cool. I wasn't able to go, so I could get back to you on that. But it was just a neat, sorry, it was just a neat take on athletic signing day that I saw, but I could get back to you and get that feedback to Jeff so that he could tell you if there weren't any students that were there.
One other item on the, I'm talking about the band, and I don't know if it's, you know, if it's been conveyed to the band groups or the schools yet, but the downtown Wheaton Association, which I'm a board member of, is participating in a, on June 21st, Salsa Day, there's going to be, it's called World Music, and it's, we're encouraging any performer, whether a professional or amateur, to perform that night. And, you know, it'll be all over Wheaton, downtown Wheaton, it's on the 21st of June. So if there's some interest by anybody through the band connections or whatever that want to find out, or they can contact the downtown Wheaton Association. And it also would be a great night just for us to, you know, participate. It's the first time, there's only two cities in the state of Illinois that require it broken.
And I know the Wheaton North South had a fine arts festival over the past weekend. I think that was the first time they did it. It was amazing. A lot of feedback that I saw on social media and people that I talked to there about, it was great. They had all kinds of middle school art there, filled the library, high school students' performances at band, orchestra, choir, theater. It's pretty fantastic. One, a couple, one report I have in terms of other stuff is committee assignments. Prepared, I think I shared with all the board members individually what the plan would be this year. Now we have two new board members seated. So just as a refresher, our policy is covered under 2.15, or our committee assignments are under 2.150. We have five standing committees noted. So for this year, the teaching and learning, 2019, 2020, the teaching and learning committee, or maybe actually the policy, it's the learning and teaching committee, this is going to be Chris Crowtry and Susan Booten. Finance committee would be Jim Atheson and Rob Hanlon. Facility committee would be Dave Long and myself. The community engagement committee would be Susan and Dave, which I thought would be kind of an interesting continuation of work at the CAC level. That committee, I think, has stayed pretty consistent for the past three years, so good chance to change it up. As I mentioned earlier, Jenna has volunteered to continue on the HR policy committee, and we'll have Rob join her on that. So those are the five standing committees noted in that policy. We do have one, what's called the special committee, which is the SEL committee. And for that, we're going to have Chris and then Jim is going to join that committee this year. Couple other things we've done in the past is in terms of liaison to the citizens advisory committee. I know Jim has expressed Jim Atheson's interest. I don't have to say that. Jim has expressed interest in continuing on that, and I'm going to, I feel like the board president should be kind of at that group, so between the two of us, we'll make sure we get cover of all those. In addition, in the past, we've had a board liaison with the Student Excellence Foundation. Having thought about that a lot and taking feedback, I don't, I don't think we're going to assign a board liaison to that committee. I haven't talked to anybody at the SEF, whatever, and outside my house. But I think I would prefer to have the SEF come to us, Student Excellence Foundation come to us and give a report. I think that's going to make their work more public, give it a bigger audience, share that information with the board. Kind of starting on a regular basis, but maybe every couple of months. I think that would be beneficial to the board, plus putting another three-hour meeting every month on the board member. I think this opportunity that, from what I understand, is going well, so that's kind of my thinking in terms of 2019, 2020, in terms of that, that group and all the committees together. Any questions on that? Okay, the other thing that I wanted to talk about is Jim Roman, before he left, had come to us with lots of thoughts on the IASB, the Illinois Association School Board Delegate Assembly. Did get a letter in my mail at home about boards suggesting thoughts and changes on that. What I would like to do is take Jim's concerns to the board presidents at Naperville 203 and Naperville 204, on verse 205, to see if they have a similar feeling in terms of kind of the voting, majority versus a supermajority, and as a reflect the principles of IASB. So that's something that Jim was passionate about. I think we saw a lot of, we have a lot of information from Jim, so I'm going to propose to you, if you agree, is I'll take that to this for the board presidents to see if we can build a coalition started. I think doing it with three other four school districts total would have a lot more power than just doing it on their own. Thoughts on that? Okay, any other board reports from board members? Okay, topics for future discussion, we have three things noted, the 2019, 2020 Community Engagement Plan. Number two is the policy manual update, I believe. And then three, start of a discussion on the profile of a graduate. And then our next regular board meeting would be June 12, 2019, at seven o'clock at the SSC here. We do have one person sign up for public comments. Didn't get a chance to read it before, so I have to read it now. Public comments are valuable and important to board members. We welcome the opportunity to listen to the concerns and issues that are important to our community. However, it is the board's policy not to directly discuss or take action on any items until the time has been taken to gather adequate information and objectively evaluate viable options. Please understand that the lack of action or response tonight does not imply any lack of interest in what is being said. In addition, to preserve confidentiality, the board and its president reserve the right to request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in future closed session. The board must protect the stability and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process. And your comments tonight, three things, please use the microphone, state your name and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and please be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or common setting to members of the board or staff. If you feel your manner needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's next chance to chat, which is on October 22, 2019, or proceed to comment and write in to us. Harold?
Good evening, yes, my name is Harold Lox, I'm a resident of District 200. Just watching the meetings and discussion on the, on the teachers' substitute pay, and I see the frustration that Jim had with voting for it, and I know there's some, you know, questions for it by Chris. I believe that, you know, I've seen other government bodies, they have committee of the whole meetings where they bring forth these discussions beforehand to vet them, and then they come back with a policy to be voted upon. And I think that's what's kind of missing, because I think at one time, our district, back about eight, 10 years ago, used to work that way, where they had a committee of the whole meeting where they discussed these items before they went to vote, you know, the next meeting and stuff, so we were able to vet it out. So I do understand some frustration by Jim and even Chris's comments about having some good ideas about, you know, starting the substitute pay or the, I guess, teachers based on the number of days they restarted working, to put them in a, you know, a track so they, they're here to support our students and stuff. So that's my only comment, thank you.
Thank you. We do have a closed session tonight, so I'm going to move to adjournment closed session for the purpose of discussing the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether parcels should be acquired, five ILCS, 120 slash two, subparagraph C, subparagraph five, and the employment, employment compensation, discipline, or forms or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity under five ILCS, 120 slash two, subparagraph C, subparagraph one. There's no action expected following closed session. We have a roll call vote on this. Oh, wait a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanlon.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Vanon?
Yes.
Mrs. Booten?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowtry?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mals.
Yes.
Okay, once we've got the guesses, we'll move to closed session.